And Stuart, if you're talking, you are on mute.
I am not talking. It's we're just about to start. So I was just gonna give a couple of minutes we have. GIS people coming in and I'm still getting more people on the list.
Perfect. No worries.
So give we'll give it till two after and we'll start. All right. Good morning. Let's get started. This is a special town hall meeting. For election administrators. My name is Stuart Fuller and election Secretary of State's election voter services manager. We have invited county election administrators to this meeting with representatives from the library, Caroline Saltus and Megan Burns. State Library is our partner in geo-enabled elections and including redistricting. We've also invited to have the counties invited GIS professionals that work with them. So we have on this call, we'll have a mix of election administrators. From the counties, county GIS personnel and then also. County GIS contractors. So what were the focus of the meeting is redistricting. Redistricting is required by the constitution. We've had the redistricting commission that's gone through and done redistricting for. The congressional districts. That was the first thing they did. And then they went through and did their redistricting for legislative districts. Legislative districts. Cut across counties. According to the library, there's about 26 counties that don't have to really worry about. Legislative splitting their counties, more of a replacement of a district number and then the other half of counties have to worry about adjusting boundaries. Part of the redistricting process is there's two things in statute. That happened. One is adjustment of county precinct boundaries. That's required. And there is kind of a dead by 30 day working deadline for that adjustment of county precinct boundaries. If you need to adjust precinct boundaries to reflect redistricting. That adjustment is currently in a bill that got transmitted over the threshold for transmit all. Can't remember the bill number, but it's changing that deadline to 90 days. So if that bill gets passed pretty soon, then the deadline goes up to 90 days. So counties are responsible for looking at their precincts. The statute on the precincts has, let me just pull it up and quote it. Is under. Thirteen three oh thirteen dash three dash one oh one. And part two, and it says, the governing body of each county shall establish a a convenient number of election precincts. Equalling the number of electors in each precinct as nearly as possible. So that's statutory language. That does give counties some wiggle room on that. There's also another bill that's. In process that would set the maximum number of electors in a precinct at 2,000 or 2,500. That's still in process. Also, that bill, I'm not sure if they're gonna amend that bill also to talk about when you would do that. So those those two bills are in flux for redistricting purposes. Counties should be looking at their precincts, looking if they need to adjust their precinct boundaries to to accommodate the legislative boundaries changes. The other thing that is statutorily required is in Title VII, which is looking at your county commissioner districts. County commissioner districts are a little. Different set of wording and it's based on. It's more based on not the voters and I have to pull. I can't remember the top off the top of my head that correct Title VII. For that, but it's equal in area and equal in populate, it kind of equal area, equal population as possible. So counties really with redistricting, the first fundamental change is looking at their precincts, adjusting those precinct boundaries as needed for the legislative boundaries. Again, there's about half the counties that need to do that. Then every county, depending on your form of government. If you have a special form of government like Butz or Bo, which is which is different. Looking at their county commission districts and adjusting those as needed. People have been sued. There's if you go back to the MCAs on that Title VII part of county commissioners, people have been sued over county commissioner districts. There are in the annotations, some references to lawsuits. So just be aware that that is a thing. And it comes under the Fourteenth Amendment to the U.S. Constitution of one, one person, one vote and making sure. That districts are representing equal as equal population as possible. So Connor put the statute and I'll pull that up just to confirm that the statute is in the chat. Thanks Connor. Just seven four twenty one oh two. Yeah. So seven four twenty one oh two in each county of the state calling each federal. Decennial census, the board of county commissioners will divide there are some counties into as many commissioner districts as their county commissioners. And ensure the districts are as compact and equal in population and area as possible. Porishment may take place at any time for purposes of equalizing the population areas commissioner districts. However, commissioner district may not at any time be changed to affect the term of office of any county commissioners being elected. Change of boundaries of any commissioner district may be not be made between the date, but that falls six months before county commissioner primary election and the date of the general election. And then the part of the next part, the district judge or judges of county should review the action commissioner's determine whether or not the action meets the requirements of this section. So there's a review part on that staff status. This is a Title VII thing. I'm just mentioning it because as you're doing precincts, you also want to get your county commissioner districts. And I would also defer to your county attorney and to Mako, I think has some guidance on the county commissioner districts. A lecturer. So the term of art Eric for that question, lecturer means registered voter. That is, that is the definition of Title 13. And also, if you look at this Montana state constitution, they talk about electors. It really means registered voter. So there is a little difference between the precinct. The precincts and then also the division of county commissioner districts. Those that is kind of the. Oddity is, do you look at the census or do you look at what you have for registered voters? Yeah, I'm not sharing my screen at this time. I just want to give you a little background of why we have the meeting that kind of the concerns and kind of the. What you guys have in front of you, which is really looking at your precinct boundaries and then also looking in association with that is looking at county commissioner districts. So purposes of this meeting, I'm going to turn this over to Megan Burns. She's from the state library. Secretary of State has had a partnership with the state library as a project, what we're calling geo-enabled elections. I think everybody hopefully is on this call where with our new election management system, photo registration system, we have a. Part of the system is called total address, which allows GIS capabilities within the system. And so we've gone to address ranges to address points that have associated lab along and we're using that functionality. And we're partnering with the library as a repository of the master address list and then and the keeper of master address list and associated blocks. The library has also been working with the counties and their and with everybody to get into the system. The precinct split map for the counties. Precinct splits again are where you have a precinct and you need to divide that precinct up to accommodate. Different administrative boundaries like school districts, overlaying fire districts, water sewer districts. Other special districts where you may have an election within that precinct. And then you associate that precinct split with the associated districts. That's how the election management system works and the voter registration system, everything is based on the precinct split. That's also how during revisions of precincts, we need updates to the precinct split map. And then we can use that and other techniques to reassign the precinct splits to the voters, which will then move them in the correct. Other districts associated that's split. So. The building block to get to redistricting is changing your precincts, boundaries and then adjusting your precinct splits. Getting us a new map with the library, getting that system, getting that staged and ready to go into election minute administration into like empty. Total address and then doing the adjustments there for moving people to the right precinct splits and then going in and adjusting the district assignments for those precincts. Splits. So the first part of this is the work that you're doing now, which is looking at precincts for the county. So I'm gonna ask Megan to share our screen and go into the resources that are available from the library to help counties go through this process.
Thanks Stuart for having us today. Hopefully, let's see, are you seeing my screen?
Yes.
We can do it. Perfect. Yeah. And thank you for going through the explanation of how it goes from the counties to us. And back into total address. Yeah. So I shared the website, the web address for our geo-enabled elections website. On the main page. I don't see if I can move things out of my way. There is just an overview of the process so far, but today we'll be focusing on the redistricting tab. And so the purpose of this. Tab was just to provide resources to the election administrators, to GIS professionals and to the public so that they could. Then get to work on redistricting and creating and updating their voting precincts in their county commissioner districts. And. As Eric mentioned, if we're supposed to be using electors, which is registered voters, we don't have that number just yet. We are. Secretary of State's office is working with the pro, the company that is in. Charge of total address to try and get that export of. Addresses with the number of registered voters by address. So just know that we are working on that. But in the meantime, I wanted to at least provide you numbers for the total population for each block. And 18 and older population for each block and then summarize those numbers by your current voting precincts and your current current county commissioner districts. So at the top here, we do just provide some links to the current annotated code. The next section is an interactive map that you can either open in. The web map or the application. If you open the web map, you can go in and modify symbology. And I'll just go ahead and click on it. You can change labeling. You can turn on and off the layers a little easier. And you can add new layers to this map. So just depending on your level of comfort, there's nothing you can break in here. But if you go ahead and log into ArcGIS online, if you have account, but even if you don't, you can click instead of new map up here. There should be a modify map option, but if not, we can, if you have any issues, let me know. We can talk further about it. So this map has the Montana structures and address layer in here. It has all of the 2020 geographies. So everything from reservations, places, school district boundaries, the legislative districts in 2020. So the 2020 blocks were based on the 2020 school districts, places and whatnot. So when. The redistricting and apportionment commission were updating the House and Senate districts for this new legislative period. They were using 2020 geography. Your school districts may have changed since then, but. They couldn't use those. They had to use what was in the census geography for 2020. Also included in here are the census lines or edges is what the census calls them. So if you zoom in on a line. As you zoom in, the items over here that are in gray will start to turn black and they will turn on as well. And you can go ahead and click on that line and it will tell you. If you actually click on the line, which is still off there. Now it's now it's not grayed out anymore. It'll tell you what that boundary is and some of them will be roads, some will be water, some will tell you that it's a parcel line or. PLSS, so township range section. Some of them will just say statistical boundary. And so that just means that it was not classified. But you can tell that it's on a section line here. And you can tell that from the base map, which has the sections in here. This map will let you change the base map as well. So if you want to look at a different base map other than the map of Montana, if you want to look at. Imagery, there are those options in here. It will also let you look at what we currently have for your area for every election district, including city boundaries. Voting wards, cemetery districts, fire districts. And so if you go in here and you see something isn't mapped correctly. You can take a screenshot. You can send me GIS data. We can get that fixed, but just know that. Whatever the boundary is in here, that's what we're using to base your precinct splits on. And those precinct splits will be added to this map. Probably in a matter of a week or so, we just published them and they're going through the testing process right now. So those are coming too. So if you don't want to get all too techie with the web map, there is this map application as well, which has all those same data sets. It just makes it a little less clicky. So you can zoom in. You can still turn in on and off the layers and see which ones are on and which ones haven't shown up yet. You can see your legend here. You can search by address if you would like. And then as you zoom in, if there's, you'll see that it'll start showing up the blocks, which are these. Green polygons and like the little green labels with your population numbers. These little yellow points are the census block centroids. And so I took each polygon. And I then created a point for each polygon. And so when I did my analysis for the voting precincts and for the county commissioner districts, I just summarized by the point. Because you'll see that some of the voting precincts, part of the block will be on one side and part of a block will be on the other side. And I did not go in and count up address points or try and guess how many people in a block were on one side of the line or the other. But you can see where the point is. And so wherever that point fell, all of the population for that block was on it. Either one precinct or another. So even though it might be split, I didn't split it. Now, that doesn't mean you can't. I just want you to know how I perform the analysis. So the other option here in the application. Is this ability to create a little map so you can insert a legend, a pop up and you can set your map area. And it'll, you can enter a title and you can download your image here. You could also just use your own like screen capture. As well, if you'd like. So those are those main tools there. The next part is the go to data section. This will get you to the GIS data layers, which are also listed below. But before I get ahead of myself. All of the information that we've created for you are are out on our FTP site. So all the data layers. We created some PDF maps and our spreadsheets. So the reports that list all the precincts are all out on our FTP. So you can go ahead and just click on the FTP site and it'll take you to those resources. The statewide one has the statewide report with all of the counties in it as well as this is your file Geo database or you could have the shapefile version. And then I also included a file Geo database of those block points so that you can see exactly where they were in my analysis. Also in here, if you want to go by county, the county data layers are in here, county maps. In the counter reports. So in the report, if you click on a county, it's going to list your precincts as they are currently. What the current senate and house district numbers are and what they've changed to. With the new 2024 to 2032, house and senate districts, what the total population is, what the 18 and older population is. And the current acres. And I did try and at least say what may have changed. So in this case, there was a number change. The maps, I created a map for each county. I created maps for each voting precinct. So if you go in here. And you click on a county, it'll also show you that precinct and you can then see. Township sections and just have a little map example of your voting precinct. And then. This also, and I'll just do it from the side. We did put together, Stuart mentioned, a list of which counties have house and senate districts that are splitting their voting precincts now. That is this, that we also did an analysis of which voting precincts. Potentially have populations greater than 2,000 or 2,500 based on the current legislation that. No voting precinct may be larger than that. We'll see what happens with that legislation. So that are county reports, data layers, talk about the maps here. And then, as I mentioned, all of those data layers are available for download. So here is that list. You can download the current. House and senate districts, the new house and senate districts, all of those census geographies are available. I even put together a ArcGIS Pro project. So if you download that and you download all your election districts, they'll already be symbolized and labeled. And ready for you to use. That's out there in the FTP. And then, as I mentioned, all of your statewide election districts are available as a web service or. On our FTP, under elections, you can download all of the elections data for the state or by your county. So if you come into your county, you'll get one of the election districts, which is either by file Geo database, which is preferred. Cause then you'll have all the nice field names or by shapefile. And then you'll also get a report of what we have for your latest precinct splits. So. Every Wednesday Caroline goes in and exports your precinct splits from ElectMT. And this is the report that we get. And so it will show you your precinct, precinct part. And then it shows which districts are in each one of those precinct parts. And so then we're using this to match it to your election boundaries. So in the map to then create. Your precinct splits. And so those precinct splits are in here as well. So the one with the date on it is the one that is the official one without any null values. That goes into total address. This one includes areas that have election districts, but haven't been identified. As precinct splits yet. So if you need further clarification on that, just let me know. So those are in there. Some additional information. The legislative division was able to provide meets and bounds. So descriptions of each of the new house and senate districts. That was created in a program called MapTitude. That is a text file that's available out there. So if you want to know how to describe your district. So the second district, this is that description. Those are out there. You also have this block equivalency file. The equivalency file is just going to tell you. What the block number is. So it's a list of all the blocks for that house district. There's also in here some documentation on the census data as well as the final report that was submitted to the secretaries of state's office. This report does list out all of the house and senate districts by county, population, population percentages. So there's a lot of good information in here too, if you haven't seen that report. That's all in here. We do have a little section on current legislation. That involves voting precincts. We've provided a couple of different software application options. In case you're wanting to do this work. And if you have ArcMap, there is that free add in for 10.7. Otherwise, there are some free. Either web-based or downloadable software you can use. If you don't have a GIS person on staff, there is this list of GIS contractors. That may be willing to help you and then. Once you are. To that point where you've updated your voting precincts, you've gotten the resolution approved and and you've submitted your. New descriptions and data to the secretary of state's office. You'll also want to send those new maps, data layers, legal descriptions, whatever you have to us here at the state library. So that we can incorporate them into your new precinct splits and get them added into total address. And so we did go over this process to. Of once you have them, you'll send those to us. Will create your new precinct splits map. We'll share that back to the counties. So that they will have the GIS data if they want it, but also a map so that they can see. And just to back up, before we can create your new precinct splits map, you'll have to go into ElectMT. And update your precincts with the new house and senate districts. And any, if you have any name changes to your voting precincts, or if you have any additional changes to your voting precincts. Say your precinct moved and now it includes a new school, a different school district. Or it includes a different county commissioner district, or now you're split into two, you'll might have to create a new precinct. So once you've got ElectMT updated, then we will download. That new spreadsheet from ElectMT with all of your precincts, like I was showing you that list, which I. Can almost get to it.
So part of this is Megan, just to clarify for the election administrators, the sequence in advance is, you know, obviously we're gonna do this. This work after the May school election, because we're not touching, we're not touching it now. Part of it is a sequence of events of getting your precinct splits updated, your, if you're changing precinct numbers, all of that kind of. Ready to go and we'll be doing this in test, of course, first. And then there's some stuff that we can do on backend as far as scripting, like we'll, once we have the precincts, you got the precinct stuff updated and I. There's gonna be some work that we're gonna be able to do scripted wise, so we'd be able to work off the spreadsheets and things like that. Instead of having to do a bunch of manual work in in ElectMT, because I think that's going to be. Uh, because I think that's going to be a better solution. Because as we know, doing manual work, you will get it mostly correct and then you will make a mistake on one part. So if we can do it script wise, it's going to be better. Um, so there is going to be a sequence of events of updating your precinct names, your precinct splits along with that. And then um also adjusting the district assignments. So this will include adjusting your house districts, legislative districts. Also, if you have changes where you've created a new split or you've modified a split where you have to move like. Some of your sub, other, your school districts out. So that's all work that we need to coordinate and make happen. Um, and I think we're going to do this through scripted updates. So what Megan is showing you, these, these things of here's your precinct split with your districts assignments with that. Those are really important things to review. And then the other spreadsheet that I was very excited about was that change. The change spreadsheet for legislative districts, we're showing here's your old districts, here's what your old precincts say. And according to our information, this is what the new district would be. So all of that stuff is going to be a kind of a sequence. So. Again, we're not touching redistricting at elect M T. Until after the May school election, because I don't really want to, I don't want to. I don't want to mess up stuff when you've got ballots in flight. So a lot of work right after the May school election to get redistricting, go through this process. What you guys need to do now is focus on the, on the new precincts and then looking at your splits, you're adjusting splits and understanding what that is. And getting that data prepped.
Right. So we're still accepting, if you see something wrong with your current data. That doesn't involve redistricting at all, please get that to us if it will affect your elections in May. I know we do have some outstanding edits we're working on right now. And then Stuart, yeah, you make a good point. We could be working in tests for all of this and. Exporting anything that you do in elect M T and test and create that spreadsheet for you as well. And and review that for the new district after, after the May election.
Yeah. So and working through some of those sequence changes um after the May election and test, making sure we've got that. It is something, and I know I'm going to have this question, oh, well, if we do all these work and tests and we like it, can we just export it into prod? No, it's kind of the same reason there's um IDs that are issued when you create new rows in the database. And so there's like a row ID or something like that for that particular thing. And it's pretty easy to get out of sequence. So just like for like voter IDs, then you'll notice this at task, you know. Butter IDs that you issued in test, if you can go in and create a test ID and then go look that person up in a prod. Of course, it's going to be different because you're out of sequence on the issuance, the issuance. So it's the same, same idea, idea there where we can't, we want to test the stuff and test. And then make this more of a scripted update, um, work through those issues and tasks and then do that in prod. And then, of course, then load the new precinct split maps um for these changes from the library into prod.
Excellent. Thank you for that clarification. Are there any questions on the voting precinct part? Anything in chat that I'm not reading? Okay, hearing nothing. I'm going to move on to the county commissioner part. Um, and I will just mention too that um. We are trying to make all of these resources known through our state library news. So you can subscribe to that. Obviously, we're sending it out to the election administrators, their email list. As well as through the Montana Association of Geographic Information Professionals email list. So if you are interested in subscribing to either of those, there are links to those here. That would also include other news from the library. So if there are changes to data layers, et cetera. That is how we send out our, our news updates. Okay, county commissioner districts, very similar to the voting precincts. I use the same process. In this case, we really only needed total population. So again, I took the blocks, I created points. And then I did a spatial join is what it's called between the county commissioner districts as we currently have them mapped. And that census block point data. And so similar to voting precincts, I'm providing reports by county, county maps. I also have maps by city and maps by district in here. And then you can download a Geo database with that county commissioner district analysis. You can read through all this or you can go out to the F T P and you can see the block point file if you want to download that. Here are all the county maps. Uh, the county reports, the county reports, I did do some initial analysis for you. Just so that you have a little something to work with. And so you'll see that I added up the acres divided by the number of your county commissioners. And then what that percentage of acres is and how much it deviated from the. Equal division and then your population as well. So total population divide by three, if you have three commissioners and then your percentages. And how it deviated and the percent of deviation. So that's in there. Um, the maps by city. If you click on a city, it's going to give you what your commissioner districts may or may, maybe it doesn't go through that city. But just so you can have a zoomed in. Map of your city and then the little green labels and lines, those are the total population numbers in green. For that area. There's also the state ride report as well as you can download the Geo database for the whole state in here as well. And here is just an example of one of the maps just for a particular district. And it does have population and numbers in there, the blocks in there as well. So that is what's in there for county commissioner districts. You can also download the Geo database shapefile. Or access the web service for what we currently have for county commissioner districts. You can download them just by county and then the link to the centroids is in there as well. Same thing for next steps. Well, why don't we do it? Now, not every county has their county commissioner districts in total address. So I can put together a list, but um you know who you are too. And uh, so not everybody is going to need to update your districts, your county commissioner districts in total address. Or in elect M T, but we would still like to get your county commissioner districts. Once you've updated them, even if they're not going to be used for elections. And then similar to voting precincts, there is a map. That shows the total population when you zoom in with the blocks or a web application. And then at the bottom here, this is for folks that want to use G I S data. If for some reason you um, that, well, if you don't see what you want up there or you just want to search for it instead. You can search for all of our data layers here in the search, search ArcGIS online button. Uh, the data list here is a list of, you can search for all of our data and it'll give you the metadata record. Um, and then the bundler. So if you want something that isn't clipped to a county, say you want it clipped to a watershed or just to the incorporated city boundary. You can use the bundler to select which data sets. Not all of the data sets are in the bundler though, just so you know. So if you need something more specific, let us know and I can help you find it if you can't find it this way. All right. That was what I mainly wanted to cover today.
Thanks, Megan. I really appreciate that. Again, there's a lot of resources and information out here on this website and. Uh, if you use that Geo-enabled elections, uh, M T dot gov email uh group. That will hit the folks at the library and answer, and they can be happy to help you and help you to answer questions about. Data, G I S data, how to look at this, how to, how to think about this as far as the kind of the mapping and creating your precincts. Um, and Megan, I wanted to ask you, I know we had that request from the county to give that, that more of a modeling tool. For people looking at precincts to adjust, you know, population and things like that. Is that, was, is that available yet? Or is that something that's in here that I just missed?
So not to put Missoula County on the spot, but we did know that they were working on a, a process in pro to do that. And we were going to reach out to them and see if they would be willing to share that. Um, we haven't done anything here in-house other than just provide those various options. So. There is nothing on our resource page yet about that.
Okay. So I think Missoula County was working with Bradley and Nathan on something that was going to help them model, model that. Uh, with their G I S people. So if you um have questions about that. Um, if that's tools available for other counties, I would, I would direct you to, to Nathan in Missoula. Um, for that question and probably putting him on the spot. I don't know if that tool, get that tool built or something like that. So it may be uh something they wish for and they just, when they looked at, they couldn't get it done. So.
Oh, and Danny just posted that Kyle was able to help her.
That set up a data in a pro project that has a chart of population dynamically changes when you move the boundary, which is kind of cool.
That is very cool.
Yep. Okay.
And then, and then I think there were questions about whether or not they need legal descriptions for the boundaries. I don't know if you know the answer to that.
I, they need, so they need something in the resolution. And usually that's, again, that's more of a title seven thing um than an election thing is how you define a district or how you define the precinct. The precinct language in title thirteen is, is kind of vague. It says designate the precinct. It doesn't say any kind of requirements. Do you need a balanced survey or something like that? Um, ultimately, we need it for like practical purposes. We need it, we need a map. You need to know what it is and you need to know, and generally boundaries should be following public land survey boundaries. Because those are matched with other things. I think Megan, you can talk about that as the boundary. Yes, you or Carolyn that are the, the administrative boundary wizard of the.
It's me.
Yeah. So following the public land survey and, you know, the north part of section thirty five, you know, township, whatever. Uh, run along, you know, those are always better than following rivers and, you know, of course, those type of things, those kind of boundaries are better. So um, if you have questions about that, the meets and bounds, I think, Megan, there's a way. And ArcGIS to actually kick out something that looks like meets and bounds with public land survey.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
So I can help with that and uh, but yeah, just to know that that would not be an official legal description. Only registered surveyors could actually provide you with an official legal description, but I can provide you descriptions.
Yeah. So really for the precinct boundaries, I think the better description you have, particularly in the resolution, the better off you're going to be. Um, it will. If you get into dispute with one of your voters about which precinct they're in and then, and then you're using that precinct boundary for the house district. Or something like that. And you want to coordinate those boundary descriptions, particularly if you're, if you're lining up your precincts with the house district changes. Um, so that you don't inadvertently cause consternation. Um, or cause you to have an extra precinct split when you realize your description is off for your, your boundaries. What you thought was the boundary was, oh, we're house off or block off. And there's some weird boundaries in here. I was looking in the North Valley and Helena. And if you go look, and I think a lot of V A's know where I live there out there, because I've shown my house many times on training sessions. Um, there's some weird boundaries out there that are like cutting a subdivision in half, like, you know, half the sub, you know. Literally, it's running like in one part right down the lot line, which is, yeah, so. You got to look at that and use those and make sure your boundaries are being well described when you're doing those precinct boundaries.
So, and, and you'll look in some areas, the CAD and S C I or the P L S S doesn't quite line up to where it should be on the ground. Um, so if you do follow that, like, we want to make sure that. You're, you're not putting somebody in the wrong precinct on accident. So, so even though it is best to use township range and section. If we need to adjust the township range and section, so it is more closely. Aligned to where it should be in real life, we should know that too. And then in using township range and section, like definitely when you're updating your voting precincts and your county commissioner districts. Look at your other election district layers and try to use those. So school districts, for example, are really good. Um, way to split your voting precincts and county commissioner districts and then also verify that those are correct.
Yeah, you kind of have to look at all your underlying and anything that you're having an election in. You know, you may have a special district, you never have an election and it's just maybe be there for tax purposes. Like I know Wilson Carr County has hospital district, right? The hospital district is this there for the two, two mil levy type of thing. There's no trustees. Uh, but you know, your sewer, sewer boards, your fire boards, your school districts, the places where you're going to have an election. And have potentially have a special election there you want to look at, um, setting that up as a potential precinct split. And also looking at your precinct boundaries. So you don't run a precinct boundary down the middle of a sewer district or fire district unless you have to. Um, or a school district, those type of things. The other thing I wanted to, and I'll give Regina kind of the last ten minutes here to talk about the bill. And then Ken had a question, Megan, what's the projection? Are you using the N A D eight eighty-four? Is that, or what is that?
Um, all of our data layers are in N A D three twenty eleven. Um, we don't, yeah. So we don't have um the address points yet by elector. So um. Once we do, I mean, the, the data layer will be in N A D three twenty eleven, but we could definitely do a W G S eighty-four. Lat long in there as well.
Okay. But all the lat long is that you're giving us is, is the N A D eighty-three?
Yeah, the projections, N A D three twenty eleven.
And then, uh, true, but back to your question about contacting Megan for meets and bounds. Yes. So Megan, you contact the library and they can help you with meets and bounds. Then, um, and they can also work with your G I S persons. There's various tools, as I understand it, Megan, and ArcGIS and other things. That can kick out a sort of pseudo meets and bounds.
Exactly. Yeah. Yeah. And yeah. And so if you update your maps and you're not sure like what your new population numbers are. We, we can also rerun that analysis for you too.
Yeah.
So. I just can't update your boundaries for you and tell you where you should put your lines.
Okay. So let me talk, uh, let me answer Tommy's question and then I'm going to give it the, the mic over to Regina and talk about the bill and the status. Um, so and then Tom, uh, other time. So for the counties that have elect M T address issues, then will those be resolved for an accurate export? So that is, so the address points right now, um, if you do an act export. Those are going to be a combined address point that is the voting addresses that we have. And those are probably ninety, ninety-nine percent, there's some voting addresses that um don't come over. And there's some um counties that have addresses, particularly out east, that if they had a lot of eagle, legal addresses. Legal um addresses in Montana votes and got exported. And then also um are called non-standard addresses. And so non-standard addresses are free form text addresses. Those got converted over. But when we do a, a match to try to get an address point, we don't actually export those. So we have voters with legal address. So, we have voters with legal addresses or non-standards that are not tied to a point in total address. And then, the, per county, there's a set of addresses, a set of voters that are not tied to a point in total address because of various reasons. It can be something silly as, uh, it could be various reasons not silly, it's just different things with the difference between Montana votes and what 911, or with the GeoCode, or the library had to match those points up, and so things like, uh, prefixes, suffixes, directionals on addresses, numbers, those type of things. Spelling for street names may not match, and so there is a list of, of voters that are not there. So, that's where, when we look at the kind of the voter, it's not comprehensive on voter numbers per address point, uh, because of those issues. Relatively, if you look at counted to county, you can kind of look at relative numbers, it's not an exact number, because counties still are working through, um, and will be working through, and it's different counties have different pace on whether or not this is priority for them. Some counties made it a priority, other counties have been waiting on that, and doing other things to, uh, fix those, not what we call non-linked voters, and each county has a list of what those non-linked voters are. So, those are, and going to address this question about, um, should you be working those? It really is, um, whether or not that's going to be useful for you, and looking at your precinct boundaries, uh, looking at your adjustments for precincts. Eventually, we should be correcting all of those, because when we get to redistricting, we need to be able to, to make the change for the voter. We need to be able to have the voter linked to an address point, because once that's there, then that's going to be able to be, um, it's going to go into a different, we have some work to, um, there's more stuff going, but anyway, that change will go in your queue for you approved to update the voter record, to change the precinct split, uh, because those are, are adjusted by the precinct split, um, tie between the voter and the precinct split to the jurisdiction, and that depends on the link to the total address, uh, point. So, if it adjusts the total address point to a new precinct split, that goes to the voter, uh, and then you get an approval, yes, I want to adjust the voter, and then that is adjusted. So, you have to make that tie, make a border for that to work. Updating those, uh, non-linked voters affecting the NVRA process, as you're doing those links, as we've talked on on the other town halls, you should do that on the administrative update. Tom Lido Cascade is, talk to Sandra Merchant, and she can run you a list, and she can get you the export of the addresses out of total address, and she can also run you a voter list out of advanced search, that has the address parts in it, the residential addresses. I do want to, we have a couple of minutes left, and I want to have, give Regina, um, the mic to talk about the, the bill, and where that bill stands right now.
Okay, so I only need five minutes, guys, I just, um, Senate Bill 86 got heard this morning, and the sponsor, I've been, we've been working with the sponsor on an amendment, and the amendment does two things, and he did move the amendment forward in the hearing, and talked a lot with, and the, the hearing went well, talked a lot with the committee about why we did the changes, the first change is moving it from 2,000 to 2,500, just to give us a little, and, and the way I, I said is just to take into account inactive voters, especially for the large urban counties, and give them that wiggle room, so they don't have to create as many precincts. And then, the, also says you only have to re-precinct in between if your district grows, if you have a precinct that grows by 50%. So, if you have a precinct that's 2,500, and it grows to like 3750, I think it is, or 3,700, my math is not good off the top of my head, um, then you would have to re-precinct that, that one. I think that's going to happen very, maybe to Eric, poor Eric in Gallatin, but otherwise, I don't know, I don't think that'll happen to too many of us, so, um, it just clarified that, and I do think that amendment, I, I, I'm very, very, very hopeful that amendment's going to move forward. And then I'm working on Senate Bill 416, the one that moves the 45 days to the 90 days, I'm going to really try to see if we can get that one pushed through the House as quick as possible, I don't know if it'll be quick enough to help us, but I'm going to try. So, and I don't know that the 2,500 would be, um, affect, go into effect until 2020 era, 10 of 2023, although I still think, as we watch it go through, I still think you're going to want to shoot for the, I, I would anyway, so you don't have to redo it. I'm going to shoot for the 2,500, but if you feel more comfortable with the 2,000, it's up to you, but I'm very hopeful that 2,500 is going to move forward.
All right, thank you, Regina, appreciate that, and then Connor, Mike's next, uh, he had something, he had a question, or something he wanted to talk about?
Hey, can anybody hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, um, so I just wanted to clarify on the ArcGIS Pro, the redistricting thing, uh, so we were working on a web-based app, uh, for, you know, to help out with redistricting. Time, um, the time that it would take to get it ready for, for this particular redistricting, uh, got away from us, so we, what we actually did is rolled back to the ArcMap version, um, it does work on 1081, and it actually works really, really well, it's really slick. Um, so that's, that's kind of what we're doing now, so if anybody has access to ArcMap, now there's the free district data extension out there, it works well.
So, Mike, if you could get those details, and whether or not you're willing to share with other counties to, um, to Carolyn and Megan, that'd be appreciated, and then we can get that out to the EAs.
Sure, and I think that, that stuff is listed on, uh, on the elections website, too, I think.
Okay. That's, that sounds great.
Thanks.
Okay, with that, we're right at the top of the hour, any kind of last minute questions, uh, we can answer in just a couple of minutes here? Okay, really appreciate your time and effort, we will be, um, taking and recording this, I'll hand a recording to the library, so then get it out to the GIS, um, Pro, the GIS, uh, community, um, so they know about it. If you have additional questions about the resources on, that the library has, or you need help with mapping, you need help with precinct boundary descriptions, meets and bounds, please, Geoelection, Geo-enabled elections at itg.gov is the source, plus, um, they put their contact information out on the, out on the web. We are, this is part of our partnership between the Secretary of State and the library, we really appreciate all the work that Carolyn and Megan and others at the library have done to help with elections, so I, you know, round of applause to the library for all their good work, I mean, it's been great, it's been a great partnership. Megan, Michael, Erin, and Carolyn have been outstanding, um, and we plan to continue this partnership, uh, you know, for the foreseeable future, uh, GIS and elections is not going away, and we need to use the tip, the tools that are there. It's like my old boss said, the days of green eye shades and stoned pencils are long gone, and that is very true in GIS. So, we have a lot of cool tools out there, and let's take advantage of them to help with elections. So, with that, I'm going to close and end the meeting, and we'll get the recording, uh, posted on SharePoint, and, uh, Sadie will get that, and we'll get a recording over to the library to get that out to, out to that, so, thanks again, and have a great rest of your day.